Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the Planning Commission meeting to order. And flag salute by Commissioner Ruiz, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you guys would please join me in our pledge of allegiance. If you're wearing a hat, please remove it. And place your right hand over the heart and join me here in the pledge. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hegel.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Turley Trejo.
Here.
And Watts.
Here.
Okay.
Here.
Do we have any public comments that are not on agenda items?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm gonna dispense from reading that. I will go ahead and read on the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting, by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to planning commission@temecula.ca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the commission secretary, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. Okay, so on the consent calendar, we have two items. Number one, we have the minutes. We need to approve the action minutes of February 1st and also February 15th.
I'll move the item.
Second.
All right. Motion by Adam Ruiz and second by Gary Watts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Motion carried. And number two, adopt resolution affirming the decision of Administrative Law Judge Nye Perkins to revoke the conditional use permit issued to the bank. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Motion to approve.
Does it need to be read?
Just be safe, Lynn.
Okay. So, that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution affirming, I already read that, Administrative Law Judge Nye Perkins to revoke the conditional use permit issued to the bank located at 28645 Old Town Front Street, Temecula. PC resolution number, a resolution, the Planning Commission of the City of Temecula confirming the decision of Administrative Law Judge Nye Perkins to revoke the conditional use permit issued to the bank. I've just read it again. Same thing. So, we're good. Do we have a motion?
Before you do that, I just wanted to jump in and clarify that we do not have any requests to speak for this one. It's already said, but we just wanted to make sure that that was in the record.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Solis, a second by Gary Watts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, well, move to the business of the meeting. Number, item number three, receive and file budgetment engagement session, and this is a recommendation that the commission receive and file the budget engagement session and provide general recommendations regarding the same. Hello, Ms. Hennessy? Welcome.
On? There it goes. So, I believe most of you have been through this before, but this is a stop in the beginning of our budget process. And what we do is we meet with each of the boards and commissions each year in the beginning of the process to share with you an update of our budget highlights. We go through budget policies, overview of the overall budget process, and then we'll have some discussion questions. And I'll start with the discussion questions, and then we will revisit them at the end of the presentation. And if you have any questions at all during the presentations, let me know, or we can discuss questions afterwards. So, the first set of discussion questions is, as a commissioner, do you feel that the city's investment of financial resources is in line with the community's priorities? And then if yes, what programs or projects are most beneficial to our community? And then if not, how could the city better align its resources with the community priorities? So, our budget process begins in January of each year. When we review the current year's budget, we look at the revenues and expenditures, and we compare that with the trends that we're seeing in the overall economy, how they're spending, how departments are spending against their budget, and we make any updates that we need to, to our five-year financial projections. And then in February of each year, we bring any adjustments to the council. We call that the mid-year budget update, and the council will review that and appropriate any additional funds, or make any adjustments needed to the, both the operating budget and the capital improvement program budget. And then we also kick off the next fiscal year's budget process for both the annual operating and the CIP budget in February. And then we also do these meetings. So, the budget engagement sessions, we meet with each of the city's boards and commissions, and we are trying to gather your feedback, get a pulse on what you're feeling and hearing from the community, so that we can then share that information through the budget process with the council at their workshop in May. During March and April, staff works to develop proposed annual operating budget and CIP, and that's what's presented to the council at their May budget workshop. And that's a meeting open to the public. It's during the daytime. And then the council will discuss any changes that they might want to make to the proposed budget, and those are incorporated in what we call the adopted budget. That's presented the first meeting in June to the city council. And then throughout the year, we do ongoing analysis with the departments. We review their budget versus actual expenditures and revenues, and identify any anomalies or make any changes that might need to be made throughout the fiscal year. We utilize several different tools to build our appropriation recommendations in the budget, the first of which is the middle one, which is the prior year carryover. And what this represents is any programs or projects that were started in the prior fiscal year that maybe didn't come to completion. We want to ensure that the funding is adequate so that those projects and programs can be completed, so we first budget for the carryover of those projects. Then we take inputs from a variety of factors, one of which is the community satisfaction survey. So, every, every so often, two to three, sometimes four years, we go out to the community, we do a community satisfaction survey, and then that informs us where the community's priorities lie, where their concerns might be. We are budgeting for that survey to be done next fiscal year. And then we get the feedback from the boards and commissions through these meetings here. And then we also look at the various program and services master plans that the city has, and make sure that we are programming the CIP budget to include any projects that are identified in those plans, or any programs, any events, things of that nature. And we try to ensure that we can identify the funding necessary to meet those plans throughout the budget cycle. And then finally, city council policies. Last night, the city council was presented with the various policies that help us build the budget, you know, reserve levels, things like that, appropriation priorities. So, they affirmed that the existing budget policies are good and intact, so that way we know what our limits are on how much we have to appropriate for resources, or reserves and things like that. Throughout the budget process, there's three key deliverables, the first of which is an internal document. It's called the preliminary budget, and that is a culmination of all the department's requests. We develop that in the March-April timeframe. That's presented to the city manager, who then makes his recommendations into what we call the proposed budget. The proposed budget is a public document. That's what's presented to the council in May. And then any changes from the proposed is incorporated into the adopted budget, which is presented in June at their first meeting. And once that's adopted, that becomes the official spending plan for the next fiscal year. And the recommendations that we receive through these budget engagement sessions do get reflected in the proposed budget, and then again in the final budget. And this is an exhibit that ends up in the budget document itself, and it's a summary of all the feedback that we get from each of the boards and commissions, as well as a common theme that we hear through all boards and commissions. Those are summarized in the middle. And we share this information with the city manager, who incorporates this into his proposed budget, and we share it with the city council. And then they may look at what they're hearing through all the different boards and commissions, and ensure that our budget reflects these priorities. So, I mentioned they reviewed the policies last night, and the key policies that impact how we prioritize and build our budget are listed here. So, anytime that we have available general fund balance, so, as you probably know, but I'll just mention it, the general fund is the city's main operating fund. So, it can be, it is unrestricted, and it can be used for anything so long as it serves a public purpose. That's the fund that we use to provide public safety, public works, community development, administration, things of that nature. So, when there is available fund balance, general fund fund balance, these are the appropriation priorities. And that money is thought to be one-time money, so we want to align that with one-time expenditures. So, the first priority would be to purchase any public safety equipment or non-recurring programs that are needed but weren't quite budgeted yet. Number two is the asset management reserves. So, asset management funds are set up so that we have enough money to replace the city's assets, such as fleet, technology equipment, facilities. Once those assets go beyond their useful life and they need replacing, there's money in a savings account to do that. Capital improvement projects, self-explanatory. And then number four, number five, so, we utilize available fund balance to reduce unfunded liabilities. Those are related to employee pensions and other post-employment benefits, which is basically retiree health. That was a benefit that was offered to city employees prior to 2005, but there is still a cost to that benefit that was offered back then. And then the last one is a reduction or avoidance in city debt. There's also a policy regarding how we appropriate Measure S, and Measure S is the one-cent sales tax that was adopted or approved by voters back in 2016. The council back in 2017 created these budget, these appropriation guidelines, where we first meet the needs of public safety, and then we put money into the asset management funds and capital projects, and then finally, we fund community services with the Measure S funds. And then as time goes on, because of priorities of public safety and community services, as those costs grow over time, they'll be less and less available for capital improvement So, I mentioned one of the priorities, or one of the policies was to utilize general fund balance to pay down the city's debt. The city council back in December adopted this policy, which is what we call our debt liability paydown strategy. And the object behind this policy was to become debt-free, have the city become debt-free in a seven-year timeframe. Pretty aggressive timeframe, but with a combination of available fund balance and funds that we have accumulated in a third-party pension trust, along with the savings that would be generated each year by paying off this debt, we were able to model out a program or a plan to become debt-free in seven years. And you can see here, these are the amounts outstanding. We have four types of debt. One is the Civic Center loan on this building. Another is the Margarita Recreation Center loan on that building that's being constructed currently. And then two unfunded liabilities, one related to employee pension, and the other to that retiree health benefit I mentioned earlier. To date, we have paid off the Civic Center loan of $12.9 million. We've paid off the MRC loan of $5 million, and we've started to pay down the pension liability, $7.25 million. And then next fiscal year, we will pay down the OPEB liability for $5.3 million. And then each year thereafter, we'll just start paying down the pension liability, so that by year seven, we will be fully funded in our pension, and will be fully funded in our OPEB liability, and have zero debt on the city's books. This shows the annual budgetary savings that'll be generated from this plan. So, at its peak, by year eight, once everything is paid off, we will be saving a little over $8 million in that, in that year alone. So, up until that year, any savings that are generated are rolled into future debt paydown. So, of what we paid down last December, we're actually at about $3 million annual savings compared to what we were before we paid down the debt, and that $3 million will roll into the next year to pay down more, and it just snowballs until year seven when we're fully paid off. And then what, what that does is, beyond year seven, that generates between, you know, $6 to $8 million additional funding each year that'll be available to program towards many of the projects that have been outlined in the Quality of Life Master Plan, or any other new projects that might come up between now and then. So, as of our mid-year budget, which was presented to council in February, these are just some snapshots of where the general fund is budgetarily. So, our revenues are projected to come in a little over $111 million this year, the majority of which comes from sales tax, as you can see here. And in the chart, what this shows is expenditures are shown in the blue bars, and then the revenues are shown in the black line. And what's notable on the chart is that the revenues always exceed expenditures. That indicates that we are structurally balanced. Not only have we been through the last five years, but we're projected to remain structurally balanced. You can also see on the black line between '22, '23, and '23, '24, we're showing a flattening out of revenue, and that's what our projection is to sort of hedge against potential recession time, potential contraction of the economy. A lot of the economic indicators right now are somewhat mixed and a little bit schizophrenic, so it's really hard to predict where revenues are gonna go. So, to be conservative, we're just projecting it basically to stay flat for the next year, and then we'll reevaluate as, as time goes on. And on the expenditures, a little over $93 million for general fund expenditures, the majority of which goes towards public safety. One thing to note here, the fire department budget shows is $11.2 million. Their actual budget is closer to $21 million, but there is a $10 million fire tax credit that is received by the county, and they apply that tax credit to that contract first, and then bill us the remaining. So, the city portion is only $11.2 million. And then Public Works makes up 20%, and Community Development, 9%, and Admin, about 14%. And then this chart plots out what our fund balance is currently, and then where we're projected to go after the paydown strategy is implemented. So, you can see that big decline between '21, '22, and '22, '23. The blue bar in the chart going down, that's the paydown of all that, all that debt we just talked about. But we're projected to end the fiscal year with $37.1 million in ending fund balance. All of our reserves will be fully funded, not only in this year, but throughout the five-year forecast. In our capital improvement program, we have 106 different projects totaling over $801 million in total cost, but of that, we've already spent down $283 million, and we have $518 million left to go. And we break out our CIP by four different categories: circulation, infrastructure, parks and rec, and then SARDA or affordable housing. And these are some of the larger projects in each of those categories. The circulation is the, is the largest element of our CIP, with 31 projects totaling over $625 million. You're probably familiar with a lot of these projects, as they are the bigger ones and they're ongoing. I'll just kind of scroll through these in interest of time. Infrastructure, we have 52 projects totaling $112 million. The Margarita Rec Center being the largest one, that's underway right now. The CRC renovation, another large one, that's also underway. And then we have Parks and Rec projects, 20 projects totaling almost $47 million. And you can see them listed here. Pickleball courts, I know is a popular one, and that's currently budgeted at 2.2, but that budget's being reevaluated as they kind of work through the subcommittee and the community feedback on what kind of pickleball court complex we'll build. And then finally, we have three affordable housing projects in the budget totaling almost $18 million. Los Haciendas, that's in progress right now, and then Vine Creek, and then six foursail units will be built over by Habitat for Humanity, over by the existing ones. And then I believe this is the last chart here. This just shows the city's headcount over time. So, we're currently at 196, what we call full-time equivalent employees. That does not include police and fire. Police and fire are provided through a contract, and we have 71 contracted fire employees and 136 for police. And then the city also employs several part-time positions that we call project positions, and those predominantly are in the community services realm for day camp and lifeguards and things of that nature. And with that, we circle back to our discussion questions. So, as a commissioner, do you feel that the city's investment of financial resources are in line with community priorities? And then if yes, which programs, projects are most beneficial to the community? And if not, how could the city better align its spending with community priorities? And I'm also here for any questions, if you have any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm gonna start on my right. Mr. Ruiz.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I did have a question on one of the slides, though. It was probably seven slides or so ago. It was forecasting the expenses over revenues.
Yes.
It seemed like there was a pretty steep incline in expenses.
Yes.
Is that just because of increased public safety costs, or what's driving that steep increase there?
Do you want me to go back to that slide?
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
That one, yeah.
There we go. So, between '21, '22, and '22, '23, we did add several new positions that were adopted in the '21, '22 budget. We also did a new salary survey, where we look at comparable cities. There's nine comparable cities that we evaluate our salaries against, and we found that because we had not done a salary survey or adjusted salaries in five years, that we had fallen way behind. So, the council approved a new salary schedule that went into place July 1 of '22, and that, so between added headcount and, and that, as well as increased contract cost between police and fire, that was the majority of what was causing that increase between those two years. And then we do have built-in cost of living adjustments in the current employment contracts, so those are reflected as well going forward.
So, pretty hard cost, though. There's not, like, you're not projecting a big jump because of proposed inflation, or something along those lines. I mean, I'm sure it's factored into, to an extent, but looking at those jumps...
Yeah, we do factor in inflation. You know, it's, it's, it's an assumption that's built into our modeling, and we do, we do have a larger inflation factor built in to '23, '24 than we do in the out-years, even though it's kind of hard to tell, it looks pretty linear. But we do build in inflation, we do build in recession as best we can predict, just to try to be as, as realistic as we can be. So, we try to factor in all known contract costs and things like that, so as far as we can gather the information, we factor in everything we know at that time.
Well, great explanation. I just want some clarification. Obviously, the black line's still above that, and well above that, and that is always nice to see, and I know it's older news, but the projected deficit in the budget from, we'll call it the dark ages, the dark years there, and seeing that we came out above, I think is fantastic. So, that was my only question on the presentation. I don't know if you wanted...
Yeah, let's just do questions.
Perfect.
Let's just do questions for right now. So, go ahead. Bob?
Of all of our loans, are they all fixed-rate loans? Is there any floating rate loans?
They, we only, well, we, we've paid them all off, but they were fixed-rate. They were 3.42%.
Okay. Yeah.
But they've been paid off.
Yeah, I think we definitely want to avoid loans today with the much, much higher interest rates. Yeah, that's it.
Questions? Commissioner Solis?
I just have one small question. I know public safety is very important. Is there any, maybe vision down maybe 10 years for Temecula to have their own police department instead of...
Their own police department, did you say?
Yeah. Instead of contracting out?
Well, the council actually discussed that last night, and at this point in time, they, they do not have that on their, on their planning list. We are gonna be, they are gonna be discussing putting our own police station, building a police station within the city limits. That's gonna be discussed at the next council meeting in two weeks. But as far as our own police station, they, they took that off the agenda last night.
Police department.
Police department. What did I say?
He says station.
Oh. Police department, sorry. Police station is on the agenda, police department is on...
Right. Gary?
Are we answering your questions, or are we just asking you our questions?
Yeah, just ask her your questions first.
Okay. Could we go to the capital improvement budget? And this is probably more appropriate for Ron, maybe?
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Or Amir.
The list of projects is what I'm after.
Circulation?
Uh, I think that's...
Or one in particular?
The one that has the bike path, the Santa Grotuitis...
That's gonna be right here.
Yeah, that one.
Yes.
Um, just curious, there was another slide that was on that had the other items, I think, too, but my question is, $7.3 million for a bike trail extension is, what are the details on that? Because that seems a lot higher than some of the other projects I saw earlier on one of the other slides, but...
I think Amir can probably handle that one.
I can. I didn't, I didn't point that at you, Jennifer. I, I figured they would have that, that responsibility on that.
Good evening. Amir Atar, I'm the engineering manager, and I oversee the capital improvement program division. So, this project actually has just been completed, you know, if, and it extends from Inez Road all the way to Diaz, and it goes under I-15. So, you know, it's a concrete path that goes, that was a missing link for us, you know, to complete the loop. So, that's why, and we actually, part of that $7.3 million, we got a grant from the state SB 1, which is Senate Bill 1. It's called Alternative Transportation Program, which is the ATP program. We got a grant, and I believe it was like $3.7 million. And that's why we, you know, we started doing that project.
Was there land acquisition costs, or just, just that sort of cost to build a...
No.
How many feet or miles of trail?
Yeah, and unfortunately, like, when we started, you know, bidding the project, which is, like I said, just been completed, you know, the cost of everything been going up, and it actually took a lot longer to complete than anticipated because of the supply chain issues, so...
Okay, that, that, that explains it. It's just my observation, or my own personal opinion, that seems really like a high price for what we're getting.
It is. We're, we're getting high prices in a lot of things. I'll just give you another example. Like, to build an access ramp, you know, at the intersections, we used to budget for it like $3,000, $4,000. In the last three bids we did, they're coming in at $8,000 and $9,000, just to build a handicap ramp at the corners. So, the price of everything is really shooting.
Amir, let's be over here, sorry.
Yes.
I think it might be, I think what Commissioner's getting at a little bit, though, is just the cost of this particular trail section versus just your average asphalted on flat ground. Maybe you could talk a little bit of how it had to get cut in, had to go under the freeway, some of the more technical aspects of that project, which I think is why it was more expensive.
You've said it better than me, obviously, so...
And it is, like, this one is a reinforced concrete that goes into... And it is, like, this one is a reinforced concrete that goes into the creek, and it goes under the freeway. So it has retaining walls for a long stretch in order for us to fit it within Santa Cruz Creek. So it does involve a lot more construction than just building a asphalt class-one, that's what they're called, if they're individually, you know, built. So this one is more elaborate. You know, it's concrete because it's in the creek, you can't really build asphalt there because it's gonna deteriorate with the water over time. Because this in high waters, we're actually, there was a picture, I think it was council when, I mean, Mayor Schwank took, that he was going through it over the weekend, last weekend, and the water was just kind of level with where the trail is. Because if it goes any higher, it can go underwater, and we actually would close it, and, you know, we have gates. But it is, basically, it's in the creek, it has a concrete path with retaining walls along a big stretch of it, and even the length of it, it's, you know, it goes from Inez all the way to Diaz going under the, you know, the I-15. And we had to go through permitting, you know, just the environmental part of it, you know, aspect of it, because you're building it inside the creek. So you have to deal with all these environmental agencies. We had to deal with Caltrans because it's going under the freeway, and it has to have some, you know, structural, so because you're going under the freeway, you don't want to do anything that, you know, would affect the integrity of the freeway.
So that was very different than the project in Old Town, which was built on land, not in the, not down in the creek.
That's correct.
So that, I know that was by far a much simpler, far less engineered project, so...
Yes.
Thank you. You explained it quite well. It's my personal opinion that I hope it doesn't get washed out, because I'd hate to see another seven million dollars put down for something that, in my personal opinion, doesn't get that much use or return to the city, even though I get the idea on the trails, but it seems like a real Cadillac-style trail for that price. But that was my question.
It's actually, just one note with that, we have a seventeen-mile loop around, you know, the city. This was a very important link to do that, you know, that loop.
I understand.
So that's why, you know, it was important for us to finish it. We're actually working on another one that goes under, you know, Margarita, just to get people off the street, and that's still in the, at the end of the design, so. And that also got a grant from the state for about one-point-five million dollars.
I walk it, so I'm trying to get our money's worth out of it, so...
Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions before we go and answer your questions? I did have one question, Jennifer.
Okay.
On the survey, is that done every year for the community?
Not every year. I believe previously, they used to do it every two to three years, but I believe it's probably been about five years, four years.
Yeah, it's typically every two to three years, as we would like to do. It was held off a little bit. There was a lot of public surveying that was done for Measure S, and so we didn't want to double that up. So that's what extended it out, that what created the big gap in between.
Yeah, I feel like it's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember going to some of those sessions, and I think those are really valuable. Even when we don't get a lot of people there, I think it's valuable, because people that care are there, right? And they're speaking up. So I would put that in there, that I think that's important, to have a community voice in our budget. I have had people asking me, actually, on that, and so when that meeting, I know that's gonna be in May, so I hope there'll be a good outreach on that, to let the community know about that meeting, because I have had people asking me and wanting to be there. So that was one of my questions. So let's, let's put up on the screen the questions that you have for us, and we'll go through each of us and answer. Is that how you would like us to do that? Does that work?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so let's go to number, the first question, everybody kind of answer that.
Just the first one?
Let's do this in a really good way. Kay.
You started, okay, so for question one, I do, I think it's, I think it's really in line. It's hard to talk about number one without going into number two. So I'll just answer number one, yes, and then we can address it in the second part of the question.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Solis?
I do agree, it was a lot of information. I can't, I want to agree with everything, but most likely, I do agree with most of it, and I do believe it's a great investment.
Okay. Gary?
Yes, I agree. And personal note to you, Jennifer, I hope you're not looking for work at the state or the federal level, because we could use you there, but we would hate to lose you.
Thank you very much.
So that's a compliment to the standing work that you and the finance folks have done on the whole budget.
Thank you.
For sure. Okay, second question, since we, I'm also answering yes. Kay?
So for, it's actually ironic, because the programs that really stuck out happen to be the same that were in that one slide with all the overlap. I mean, I think public safety, I fully support that, and I think we invest back in the community. I think it's seen, I think the expansion, the Metro team and Core team, and the, you know, the hot team, everything that we're doing, we continue to grow and invest back in the community, and I think that speaks numbers for what we're doing, number one. I think there has been, there's been a lot of discussion. There was obviously a discussion at city council last night about affordable housing, but I do feel that the city has taken a very proactive approach. If there was anything to improve on, getting some of that public out to everybody, because it's a good problem to have, but I think people don't realize how much of those projects are in town, because they don't look like what they pictured that these projects should look like. And that's a fantastic thing, but, you know, getting that word out. So I do think that the housing issue is being addressed here, and then I would just probably line up with the infrastructure as a whole. I mean, obviously, French Valley Parkway was a massive thing that we're doing, but there seems to be a very intentional effort to keep our roads as clean as we can. You know, there was a point in time where some of the, some of the asphalt jobs that were, that were done were quickly causing problems, but those seem to be remedied fairly quickly. I had some friends just visit from LA the other day, and some of their comments of how much they like coming here, because it just feels totally different than the feeling of LA, and I feel that it's very intentional.
Yeah. Bob?
Okay, to add to that, I think what's, one of the things that the state has fallen down on is maintenance of infrastructure, and I think that's something we do a very good job of, and we've been doing a better and better job as time has gone along, and would love to see that continue, particularly roads, road maintenance, I think, is extremely important, not only to our residents, but to visitors that are coming here, and it is something that is noted, but it is important, visitors coming here, which is the people that are bringing money to our community as well. So I think that's, that's, that's great. Something else I know we've started doing a lot more of is code enforcement in the commercial areas. I think our commercial areas are getting, the older ones, I should say, are getting, looking kind of bleak, and there's other kinds of issues going on there that code enforcement, I know, is now getting, getting after. And I believe there's plans to increase that into residential neighborhoods and solve some of those, those problems as well in the future. And I think that's it.
Commissioner Solis?
I believe that, which programs that are beneficial, are great, are great for transportation, are the CIP projects. Also, I ride my bike a lot, and I see a lot of community members, a lot of kids, a lot of families, they ride their bikes a lot. So I did see that there was some trail expansions, maybe I would think that maybe, maybe trees, like a CIP project, that would include some type of master tree program would be a program that I think that would benefit the community, other than that.
That's it. Thank you. Gary's?
Obviously, public safety is number one and will be forever, as far as I'm concerned. And I would be remiss if I didn't compliment our police and fire personnel for the outstanding job they do every single day. And being an ex-law enforcement officer, I know how hard it is for them in this environment these days with the issues that they deal with. So thank you to them through you, Jennifer. Secondly, and I see when you did your opening slides, you have incorporated the feedback that we've given you before, and one of my personal ones, since I have a Parks and Recreation background, is let's just keep building parks even when we think we have too many. And we do a great job of it, and I know the number is tremendous, but I could never have too many. And if, I just always look back to the cities back east, like Boston and New York and Washington, and the fact that they were smart enough to buy land, put it aside, and develop it as open space for people in tight urban areas. We're not in urban areas per se like that, but you can never have too much open space, as far as I'm concerned, and that's my personal bias, but I think that that's very important to our community. And obviously, all the products, projects and programs that are done by our community services division is great, and I hope we continue to provide a variety of programs that we do. I think it's great for all the members of the community. And there's a million other programs, I know, that are really, really good, but those are the ones that stick out for me. So thank you for putting our comments in before and expressing that, even though they may not be received with the same vigor and enthusiasm that some of us may wish, but that would be my input.
I can use, like, bold and emphasize, you know, I can italicize it if you want.
Okay, so I'm with Gary with public safety. Obviously, I think all of us feel that way, being number one, and feel that, so grateful that our city has that as a number-one priority. And paying down the debt, awesome. Like, that really makes me happy, and it makes me feel secure. And I think as a community, we want to feel that, and I think that that's another thing that could really, like Adam was saying, getting the word out. Like, this is what we're doing as a city. Like, that's a big deal. Really don't know, I mean, I don't know all the cities, but I just feel like our city is conservative financially, and that's huge. And I think that's a big, huge star for our city. A couple of things that I would like us to really focus on, and I know that we have, but I feel like, so as I was walking neighborhoods and talking to all of the residents in my district, two things that came up all the time were the homeless issue and crime.
And what?
Crime. They were worried about crime in their neighborhoods and having a neighborhood watch and having police presence. And I know that the police have their different beats, so I know they're there, but I don't know if that's something that can be focused on a little bit more in the neighborhoods. And also, I know that in the past, we've had police officers designated to the hot team, and I know we don't right now necessarily. I think they're part of the core team now, and I think that that's a piece that's missing. I think we need to make sure that, because as I drive into the city, and if I see someone panhandling, like, such a bad look. And, or see a homeless person, you know, walking by, and I know it's not illegal to be homeless, but I just think we have to stay on top of it, and in any way that we can. I work in cities where the homeless issue is much worse, way, way worse than it is here, but that doesn't mean that it's okay to have any of it here, honestly. So I feel like that's something that I would, for sure, make sure that we're focusing on as we use our budgetary means. Very happy about the pickleball courts, on a lighter note. Love that it's a picture in your slide. Very nice. I think that really goes with our healthy, livable city, and I think we'll be serving a lot of community members with that. I think that was it that I had on that, on our second question. Okay, so, third question.
So third question for me, how do we better align some spending? I share Commissioner Watts' passion for parks and whatnot, and I love seeing some of the projects on there, and I know they happen to be probably the more expensive ones there, but they're also the most, the slowest moving.
True.
You know, so when we look at a regional sports park, you know, I know pickleball courts, for example, is the big booming expansion, taking over the pit, eliminated some other fields, and it was like, well, we've got this regional sports park that's coming, but it's just so far down the road. There's been a lot of demand and hope for, you know, the aquatic center. And then the expansion of pickleball courts and all that. So if there's a way to continue maybe prioritizing that, or, you know, the impact that has for the families out here and the economic opportunities for tournaments, if we get some of these types of fields and stadium, well, not stadiums, I guess, but, you know...
The complexes.
Complexes, I think you can figure out the word. You know, there's a lot of economic value in there, so I would like to see if those could be either prioritize or pushed a little, a little along further. And then, just kind of, and I don't really know the answer, which I don't usually recommend stuff without an answer, answer for, but just getting the word out. Like, I feel there's a lot of people that follow social media and know what's going on, but that's still the same small group. You know, when we, when we hear about some of the things that are happening, it's like, oh, wow, I can't believe that Temecula's doing that, and it's old news, and stuff that we've already been, been working on. So not being afraid to highlight some of the stuff that we've done. You know, I was at an event last week when it was announced that, you know, that this was paid off, and it was a, it was a five-hundred-person room, and everybody applauded for it. This is, this is a massive accomplishment, you know, to share those, and I think sometimes we get caught up that, well, we put it on our social media, and we have those same followers, but there's still a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand residents that might have no idea what we're doing and brag a little bit about some of the stuff. So I think that's an opportunity that we can share some of our successes there.
Great. Bob?
Jennifer, your job is probably, feels like you are on a balance beam all the time. But I think balance is something that's very important. I think we do extremely good job of it, because we want to pay off our debt, we don't want to spend more than the money that's coming in, and we have so many different needs and priorities, from homeless, affordable housing, seniors, sports parks, you know, on and on and on, and trying to find a balance to spend the money that we have and do it very, very well. I think we've done an incredible job, and obviously, if we could double that, you know, that amount of money coming in, we would have double the amount of things that we could spend it on, and I know there's, would be, you know, every one of those things that are on our wish list would, would, would have money coming towards it, but I think we've done a great job.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Solis?
As of right now, no. That's it, I have no comment.
Gary?
Think you're doing a good job of spending with community priorities. I would just caution, though, at times, it seems that certain groups, as Adam was kind of mentioning in a different way, but some groups are smaller but very vocal, and they're, it seems like their voice is amplified way beyond their numbers as it relates to certain things, certain projects, priorities with the city. So I would just constantly remind everyone that there's a whole city, as Adam said, a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand people, and not everybody uses social media, and not everybody responds to an email blast or that type of thing. And I think that's easily forgotten, because there are a lot of people that just don't say things like that, and I'm sure everyone's aware of that, but it's nice to, to remember that. And just real quickly, I want to build back on number two, Linay's comment on the homeless. Every time I drive to Oceanside, I thank God that we live in Temecula, because we deal with the problem, and we don't have motorhomes lined up and down the highway, and tents on the side of the state highway and that type of thing. So whatever we're doing, we're doing a good job, I think, and anyhow, I just wanted to, wanted to kind of build on Linay's comments on that, because we do do a good job, and a lot of people don't realize that.
Thank you. Hey, okay, just a couple of last things that I had, and I know you had it on a previous slide from comments that we made before, and I don't know if anything, I've been at the city council meetings, I haven't heard anything more about the aquatics complex, and if that's really in the works at all, or really viable. So, I don't know. Do we have anything, Luke?
There's nothing in the CIP for aquatic...
There's nothing in the CIP for aquatics, but it is in the Quality Life Master Plan. So, it made it, the Blue Ribbon Committee, which you were on.
Yes.
Got it into the Quality Life Master Plan. So, it's in the out years, but it is something that has been identified as a priority at some point in the near future.
Okay. It was just one thing that a lot, a lot of different people brought up when we have those groups, you know. So, it's always been something on people's minds here. The regional sports complex, for sure, would be amazing. And then, this is something small, but we've been talking about parks. There's a park by Jackson Elementary, but nothing's ever been done to upgrade that one. It's just a little, kind of a, it's kind of a toddler park, I think. It's a younger park, but it's the closest one to my house. And it, it needs help. It needs a little tender loving care. So, I don't know where it is on the list, but just putting that out there. But I do feel like the city aligns itself very well with the priorities, and I really appreciate you wanting feedback. You know, this hasn't always been the case. So, I really do appreciate that, and I do feel like that the community needs to be able to give their feedback, however that works also. And I appreciate all the work that you do. So glad it's you and not me doing all the finances. And again, so grateful that we are a financially conservative city. That's beyond, for me, the most important thing that we can do as a city. So, any other comments from anybody? We good? Yeah?
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, we are down to, I did number four, general plan. Consistency review for an amendment to the fiscal years 2023 to 20, is capital improvement program. Yes?
Yes. Do we have, you're good? Okay, there we go.
Tell me your name.
So, I'm Katie Garcia.
Okay. I didn't have your name on here, so thank you.
Oh, no problem. All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Today, I will be presenting to you an amendment to the current fiscal year 2023-2027 Capital Improvement Program. Little background, state law requires that the Planning Commission review and provide comments to the city council regarding conformity of the capital improvement program with the adopted general plan. So, you've seen this last year. This is just another amendment to add a new project. You'll actually be seeing the new fiscal year CIP budget sheets in a few months. So, this project's newly included because the city was recently awarded grant funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development through the Economic Development Initiative, Community Project Funding. This was in response to the 2023 federal omnibus bill, and the city was awarded $800,000. So, what is the project? It's a new circulation project proposed to be added. It's the Deportola Jedidiah Smith Roundabout. The project includes the design and construction of a traffic roundabout on Deportola Road at the intersection of Jedidiah Smith Road. The improvements include a raised traffic circle with drought-tolerant landscape and hardscape. This will improve traffic safety and reduce congestion at the intersection. Here, you can see the preliminary design, so conceptual. You can see the lane configurations and crosswalks here, similar to the existing roundabout at the La Paz-Inez intersection. Staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined this project is consistent with the general plan under Goal One, Policy 1.2 of the circulation element, which focuses on reducing and limiting congestion at intersections along streets within the city. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution making a finding of consistency with the general plan for this amendment to the current fiscal year 2023-2027 Capital Improvement Program budget, and make a finding of exemption under 15378B4 of the California Environmental Quality Act. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. And we also have Amir Tarr, the Engineering Manager, for project-specific questions.
Thanks, Katie. Okay, do we have any questions for Katie?
Just a quick question, thanks for that. It seems pretty self-explanatory. And maybe this question wouldn't have happened if you didn't follow Jennifer's presentation when we looked at all of these. But what makes, what makes this project move into that spot for that grant? Was it specifically for like a roundabout or some sort of infrastructure? Or we've got a long list, what made this the choice to move forward?
This was a federal earmark. We requested it from our congressman, and it was given to us as a earmark favor. So, we said, okay, thank you, and took it. That's where it came from. Very simple, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Couple of comments.
Questions? This is question time.
Okay.
First out.
That's right.
Okay. Any questions?
I think I had the same question, why in this, this area? Because there's a long strip, and then I know there's another turnaround, roundabout there, so.
It's very needed, trust me. I drive it all the time, so excited. Gary, any questions? Any other questions?
One, one other thing I'd like to say is, you know, I think there was a question about the, we, we made a bunch of requests for the earmark. This is the one that was funded. We, the sports park in Uptown was also another one that we asked for. We asked for, at certain kind of value levels, you know, you know, like the dream ask and then lower level asks. This was just kind of in the middle, and this is the one we got.
Any other questions?
I have questions about how it's going to look. I know there's a plan.
Yeah, you can ask us.
Can you project that? I didn't get it, yeah. Is it going to be like kind of the same design as the one down the street?
Very similar. I don't know if Amir wants to touch on that. He can go into detail a little bit more.
We actually have not, other than that conceptual plan that you see, that was submitted as part of the request, to request the funding. So, we actually haven't started the design yet. So, it is a federal project right now. We are actually waiting for the official letter of award from the federal government, and that will come with guidelines that we have to follow. Now, because it's a federal project, we not only have to do the CEQA, now we have to do the NEPA. So, we're waiting to get the guidelines and how to proceed. So, then we would commission like a consultant to design the project and look at the specifics, you know, that you may be, you know, looking. So, right now, we don't have the actual specifics. This is just the conceptual, you know, plan on how it's, you know, how it's going to look. We're going to have to look at, you know, how many lanes and, you know, and all, all the different elements that goes into the roundabout.
Okay. Thank you. To answer your question.
Thank you, yeah.
Any other questions?
There's no plans to put a bike path around the, a $7 million bike path. Just kidding.
But there is a plan to put a bike path.
Well, of course.
It won't cost $7 million.
Of course. I want to, you know, kill the, the dead horse, but I think you can see that, the confusion there between $7 million and $800,000 for, anyhow.
Okay. Well, I know this is like exciting because we were like going to have to wait for some businesses to help pay for this, right? So, this is like something like...
It probably would have ended up being a condition of approval for a development in the area.
Yeah. So, I didn't even know you could do that, like ask and have certain...
Earmarks went away for a long time. They just came back.
Oh. Cool. Anyway, that's exciting. Very excited about that. Yeah, it's a big backup place right there, so that's exciting traffic-wise. Okay. Do you have something else?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I, just a couple of comments. I, I drive all the directions of that very, very often, and there's a lot more traffic there. And I think most people think, the one backup I was in last week, I counted 27 cars to have stopped at the stop sign and go. And I, it was eight minutes of waiting in line to, to do that. So, it's, I think it is needed very, very much there. I think the other good thing about putting it there is that I'm glad, first of all, glad to see a roundabout. I know the neighbors there want to see a roundabout. I think it will be a simpler roundabout than some of the other ones that people have talked about in town. And given that we have some experience with the roundabout in that area, and I know we learned some lessons from that about the road design, I think we can do it very, very well the first time around. We've had to make some modifications because it was just things I think we didn't anticipate. But I'm glad we learned all that, and I think we can do it, you know, very, very well, and have, have a lot of neighbors around there be very pleased, so.
Comments? Comments? Any other comments? I'm just, yeah, I, I mean, if I had my choice, we'd have roundabouts in almost every intersection. Like, it's awesome. It's just, have you heard of that city? That their entire city is roundabouts? It's amazing. So, let's put that on our goal.
But we, we may have to add that to like a DMV course, though, because not everybody knows how to navigate the roundabouts. If you went to a whole city of roundabouts.
They learn, they learn. Yeah. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to move the motion and staff recommendation on finding of consistency with the general, general plan and that the CEQA language that our staff member Katie highlighted in her presentation.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a first, a motion by Gary and a second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Awesome. Okay. We're down to Commissioner Reports. I'm going to start on this end. Commissioner Solis, do you have it?
No report.
No report? Gary?
Yes. I'm not sure how many neighborhoods in Temecula have mailboxes on their, on the street. Still, I know mine does, and an issue came up that I wasn't aware of before, but with people putting ADUs and, and that type of thing, parking is getting even more difficult on streets. And I found out the hard way that if a car parks in front of your mailbox, they will not deliver your mail. So, I see that as a potential problem as we develop more and more of these. And if you go down certain streets, there's no parking already. It's starting to look like San Diego or LA with the parking on the streets. So, I know that the state is doing things that ignore parking and that type of thing, but it is something that may be a problem here. And I don't have the answers to it, but I just wanted to just make, make staff aware of that requirement, they probably already knew it. But I know probably all of the, any new developments we make, they're probably box, mailboxes and that type of thing, not individual ones. But I, I really don't know what, how many of those there are in the city, but I know that it's a problem in my neighborhood, and it's probably not going to get better, so.
I think they can be red-curved, can't they?
No, they cannot.
They cannot? Really?
We normally do not do red curb in the city unless there is some type of public safety hazard. So, the red curb that we do have is for those specific reasons. But our practice is not to do red curb at every mailbox or where someone gets dropped off. But, you know, as time goes on, we will certainly might have to look at that. But our current practice is not to red curb.
Well, the, the reason why it's a concern is that a lot of people get their medicine through the mail now. And a lot of seniors are in that boat, and...
And I, and I'll tell you the reason, too, why we don't red curb is because there's no enforcement of it, and there's no means for us to actually go out and monitor that.
I, I frankly personally think it's a postal problem and that those guys or those people that work there, they do a good job, but they could probably just hop out of their little Jeep and walk around the car and put the mail in the box, but that's probably not a, a good solution. But anyhow, just something to be aware of in case we start getting complaints.
I, I will say, our, our, we've had the same mail carrier for years. I've gotten to know her pretty well. She actually does, she'll, she'll pull across the street and walk over and put mail in the mailbox.
It's the relief.
So, it's, yeah. Saturdays, they don't do it.
Any other Commissioner Reports? Adam?
Yeah, I just wanted to give some positive comments back. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend the ADU workshop, but I'd seen the program in its early stages and kind of tracked it along. And I had quite a few people I know that went out and were very appreciative of the information shared, excited to see the project come online, just, just a ton of really good feedback. Other than there wasn't enough chairs, which I think is a good problem to have because probably just had a bigger crowd than anticipated. So, just want to commend you guys on not only coming up with a project like that and rolling it out, but having an opportunity for the community to hear about it firsthand, and everything I heard was great. So, wanted to share that with you.
Bob, did you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Just a couple of things. If you haven't watched the city council meeting from last night, there was a woman who shared her story of the first responders saving her life, basically. And I actually know her, and it was really powerful to hear her share her story. So, if you have a chance to listen to the beginning of the meeting, it's, it's right at the beginning. It's right after the public safety report. And it just made me, because I've heard, you know, I've heard her story before, but it made me very appreciative of our first responders. And there was a quote that she said last night that I loved, and she said, "Heroes are people who know what to do, and you never know when you might be a first responder." And I love that because I happen, I have to be CPR certified for my particular job, and I've had situations where I've had to use it. So, and that's kind of what, why she was speaking last night, to how important it is for us to be ready in a situation where her husband, her husband and the first responders saved her life. And so, it's pretty powerful. So, if you get a chance to listen to that, would be time well spent. And then also, today's First Day of Women History Month. And the thing that I wanted to say about it, that I'm so grateful for, are those women who fought for the right to vote and for women to have a voice. And, you know, it wasn't even passed until 1920, when you think about that. And it was fought for for many years before it was actually passed. And so, I just wanted to highlight those women who fought for that. And I think that's one of the most important gifts that we could have been given as women to have the right to vote. So, just wanted to say that. Because I'm the chair and I can say that, that's awesome, okay.
And could I add that I believe Wyoming was the first state that...
Yes. And Utah was the second. I know I read up on it. Yeah. Awesome. Okay. Any other comments? All right. That was kind of fun. All right. So, Luke, you're up.
I was just going to update on the, the ADU workshop. So, you, you, you beat me to the punch there, but I think we had 186 people there.
That's awesome.
Which is very unusual for a planning workshop, I can tell you. So, that's why they were scrambling to find chairs. We thought there was going to be, I think Katie said that we thought, well, 10, 10, 20 or 30. And then the social media went out, and we're like, okay, maybe 100. And then, you know, we had at least 186 people there. So, a lot of interest there with, with ADUs. So, that, there's more to come on that. And then, I was going to thank you for something, but the city attorney said I can't do it yet, so I'll save that for later. End of report.
Who told you you couldn't do it? Of the boss? Okay. All right. Ron?
Yeah, very quickly, last night, we took a resolution for all the storm damage that has happened. So, we have some things that need to be repaired around the city, one of which is Margarita. So, we have in the southbound direction, the number two lane completely shut down north of, it's north of Mike McGar Park, and we have a sinkhole there, and it washed out some of the electrical conduit, which was primary. So, it was causing some switch delays and some series delays at the Edison substation.
So it was causing some switch delays and some series delays at Edison, um, substation. So they saw it too. So they were repair, they should be repairing that right now because it's a health, health and safety issue. But Margarita will be shut down for this weekend as the repair is going on. And then Santiago Road at John Warner Trail, that's completely washed out. So we're going to be working on that too, under an emergency resolution.
So on the Margarita, where is that going to be closed down on Margarita? What part of Margarita?
The number two lane southbound, so the one closest to the curb. If you're heading southbound, just past Courtney Place, those apartments that are on the right-hand side. So right there, the number two lane will be shut down.
Isn't that the area where we've had sinkholes, not, you know, little distance from there, but we've had sinkholes, um.
A little, yeah, a little bit from there. Those before were, um, uh, waterline.
Waterline.
That were leaking. This one was a old CMP storm drain pipe, corrugated metal pipe that just rusted out after all these years and it failed.
So it's not a, not a land issue then, it's?
No.
Yeah, okay.
No.
And just, just the one lane is closed? It's not a complete closure?
We may have to go all the way to the center line, but for right now, it's the number two lane. Yeah.
So I, um, I really was appreciative that we can do that, right? Last night when they voted on that and made it an emergency decision. So that was good, that we could actually do that.
Yeah, it allows us to.
That we could do that, right?
Yeah, it allows us to immediately get out there and not have to worry about the bidding requirements because it's under an emergency resolution.
Right. So that was, I hadn't learned that, so that was good.
I was out this morning driving around and I was very pleased and very surprised how little flooding we had. Um, obviously, we're keeping our storm drains pretty clean and roads pretty clean and everything else. But um, you know, there was some branches down and stuff that you expect, but I really saw very little flooding.
Yeah, we just don't know where all these corrugated metal pipes are from the county. We're finding them though, as they fail.
It's their fault.
Ron, on the southbound off-ramp at Rancho California.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there appears to be broken water lines or something right near the light. It's on the on-ramp.
Oh, okay.
Is that, I know it's a Caltrans issue, right?
Correct.
But they haven't done anything. It just have a couple of ditches on each side of the.
Well, thanks for the notice. We'll, we can take a look and Rodney will typically report that to Caltrans. So we'll take a look.
Okay. Any other questions for Ron? No? Anything else anybody wants to say? Are we good? You don't want to say anything else, Luke? Okay. All right. So um, our meeting will be adjourned until Wednesday, March 15th at 6:00 PM. See you then. It'll be a lot of fun.